Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Commissioner Kennedy, would you like to get us started?
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you. Thanks for joining us this evening. We're all gathered here today for our home ARP public hearing. And thanks for participating, both in person and virtually. This is always really fun that we have some technology that provides us the opportunity to do this. So I'm Alice Kennedy, Housing Commissioner for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We have a number of different staff members with us this evening from the Department of Housing and Community Development, as well as our partners from the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. I know that there's members of the city's Continuum of Care, as well as also some leaders that are part of the Strategic Leadership Committee around the work of housing and homelessness. So I want to thank everyone for being here this evening. Our agency, DHCD, administers a number of federal formula programs. Those are, and some of you have participated in some of our other public hearings that we've had in the past on those formula programs. But to give you an idea, those are the Community Development Block Grant, otherwise known as CDBG. Our Home Investment Partnership, or our home program and home funds, our housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, otherwise known as HAPWA, and the Emergency Solutions Grant, otherwise known as ESG. The purpose for today is specific to provide an overview to the city's plan to use a new federal funding source allocated to the city, which is what is Home ARP. So this is specific on the Home Investment Partnership, but the allocation of funding that we're going to be talking about today is different than our normal kind of yearly allocation of home funds. It is the Home Investment Partnerships American Rescue Plan Program. So this is part of the federal government's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And this specifically provides funding that is targeted to reduce homelessness and increase housing stability across the country and in jurisdictions like Baltimore City. We all know, and I know that a number of us here on this call today, and we all know that homelessness is an issue in our city and across communities in the United States. We also know what the solutions are and how to address homelessness and working in partnership to do so. We know that providing quality and deeply affordable and supportive housing allows Baltimoreans the safety and the stability of housing and opportunity to thrive in the community. We know that by being able to provide housing, that we are helping to change people's lives and that having a safe place to call home and a safe place to sleep at night is extremely important to the health and well-being of our citizens. To that end, DHCD, in partnership with the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, and I want to acknowledge this evening Director Irene Augustine is on the call tonight with us, joining virtually as well, and in coordination with the Continuum of Care, our private sector partners, the Housing Authority of Baltimore City, and the broad community have been working together for the past two years to develop and implement strategies to address the need that we have in the city of Baltimore to create housing opportunities to serve our homeless population and create those safe spaces for them to be able to call home. Also, through the participation in the federal initiative, House America, we have set bold goals, and the mayor, at a press conference a week and a half ago now, announced that we reached those goals and actually surpassed those goals and are aligning resources as well as securing new resources to provide a comprehensive approach that leads to a more responsive housing and a services system to prevent and reduce homelessness. You know, we want to ensure that it is brief and non-reoccurring. Today's public hearing specifically is focused on the Home ARP resources. So it's those resources I mentioned before, which is the Home Investment Partnerships American Rescue Plan Program, Home ARP, to support these efforts and the city's plan to address a priority need identified through the community engagement process that we went and undertook. And it is the production of new, deeply affordable and supportive rental housing through capital investments. The Department of Housing and Community Development has engaged a partner, CSH, the Corporation for Supportive Housing, to support the plan's development and implementation and to provide an overview of Home ARP and the plan. Before I pass it along to Jillian Fox of CSH, I just want to thank everyone again for being here today, for being engaged throughout the process and for being, you know, part of this evening's process to hear the plan and learn about how to provide additional input and public comment on it as well. You know, homelessness is a complex issue, and while solutions are known, it takes partnerships and partners across all levels of governments, our nonprofit sector, our private sector, our for-profits, our nonprofits, our communities, our members of the community with lived experience and continued engagement with the community to implement the plans effectively and efficiently. So we thank you for being part of these efforts. And I also want to take a moment just to thank also the DHCD team for all of the work that has gone into getting us to this evening. Alex Hoffman, Lori Glass, Susan Moriarty, on our CDBG team who works through all of the components of the pieces and parts that need to be done on the HUD side of this funding source. Our partners at MOHS, like I said, Director Augustine, Mary Road, our leadership team, Amy Klein from the Weinberg Foundation, and so many others that are critical to this work. Thank you so much. And with that, I am going to turn it over. I believe I'm turning it directly to Jillian.
Great, thank you. And am I waiting for slides to be up, or?
If you'd like them up now, they can be up now.
I think, yeah, yeah, we can go for it. And I'll just, while you're doing that, I'll just introduce myself. And thank you, Alice. Thank you for your leadership. It's been great to see you and Director Irene Augustine just really collaborate in this way and to address the needs in Baltimore. So it's been a pleasure to really work with all of you and your teams. My name is Jillian Fox. I work for Corporation for Supportive Housing. We're a national nonprofit that works across the country to advance housing and services solutions that provide a platform for people to, for people among the most marginalized in our community, to thrive in community. And we'll be, just go to the next slide then. Yeah. So let me just run through the agenda for today and what you can expect.
Until I can get this.
Here we go. Do what? Sorry.
I think we need to mute the Baltimore, the DHCD, there was some.
Is it, how is it?
Is it looking good on your end?
Are the slides good on your end?
Yeah.
It looks good. Okay, here we go.
Slides are good, yeah.
Okay, okay, great. So what you can expect from us today is I'm going to provide a very brief Home ARP program overview. So just hit the highlights of what this new federal resource is. Then I'll provide a very, again, high-level overview of the draft allocation plan that the city of Baltimore has put together. Then that will take about 30 minutes. And then, because we want to leave as much time as possible for questions and comments, we want to really leave about 30 minutes for you all to ask questions and make comments about the draft plan. And then we'll wrap up with a next steps on how you can continue to engage in this process and particularly during the public comment period over the next 30 days. So the Home ARP program, in 2021, President Biden signed the American Rescue Plan into law. Part of that included $5 billion in funding specifically to be administered through the Home ARP, the Home Program. And the city of Baltimore, through a formula allocation, was allocated about 15.4 million of Home ARP funds. And it's really to use to increase the quality of the city's affordable housing and meet the needs of the qualifying populations. So let's move forward. There's four major activities that can be funded through the Home ARP program. The first is the production or preservation of affordable rental housing. The second is tenant-based rental assistance. It is short-term because the Home ARP program, it ends. So this is short and medium-term tenant-based rental assistance, so not a permanent subsidy that can be applied and serve an individual family or a person, household. Provision of supportive services. So again, it's time limited. So it's about, Home ARP has to be expended by 2030. So this is short-term funding for supportive services. And then specifically, the purchase and development of non-congregate shelter, but not the operations of it. And I'm making those distinctions just to kind of help understand that there are restrictions within those categories of what they can support. Home ARP has to be used to address the needs of qualifying populations. That's HUD's term. There's four that are identified in the Home ARP regulations and notice. The first are people experiencing literal homelessness, so people living in shelter, they're living outside. The second is people at risk of homelessness, so they are at imminent. Maybe they have an eviction notice, they got to be out in a few days, they're going to lose their home soon. People fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence and other intimate partner violence, including human trafficking. And then there's kind of this catch-all that's other populations of people that face the greatest risk of housing instability. So thinking about people that are doubled up in situations or bouncing from home to home and not having a permanent home for any extended period of time, those folks. Next slide. HUD requires each jurisdiction receiving an allocation of Home ARP funding to engage in a planning process. That planning process has to include a gaps, a needs assessment and gaps analysis, stakeholder engagement with key kind of relevant organizations that work and assist the qualifying populations. Then jurisdiction has to develop a written plan that really, that outlines how and what eligible activity that the jurisdiction will use that funding for. Then a host of public hearing, which is where we are right now, and a comment period, and which will be 30 days here in the city of Baltimore. And all of that has to be done, and the plan submitted to HUD by the end of March. If a jurisdiction, this is an important point, if a jurisdiction does not submit their plan to HUD by the end of March, they relinquish their allocation of funding, it would get reallocated to another jurisdiction. And HUD's been pretty clear that there aren't exceptions on that rule at this point in time. I'd like to say that HUD did not establish that deadline until October, late October, I think. So it was, caught a lot of jurisdictions off surprise a little bit getting that done. But let's just like get right to it. I'm going to go through the needs assessment and the stakeholder process. But right, bottom line upfront, what is the high-level summary of this allocation plan? The needs assessment and gap analysis showed a significant need, pretty acutely, for people experiencing homelessness and at risk of homelessness, so those first two qualifying populations. There's been a lot of work done over the last two years to develop a strategy and be very strategic in the city of Baltimore about how funding can be secured and access to meet the overall needs of the system that addresses a variety of issues to reduce homelessness and housing instability. That plan is really guiding a lot of investments that, from other sources, including Home ARP. And so it was identified that the best use of Home ARP funding would be to provide capital funding of projects that will provide permanent supportive housing to those with the highest and greatest housing and service needs. And in order to ensure that those folks with the highest housing and service needs are able to access the units that are produced and that are, and they're prioritized and assisted in getting to those units, tenant referrals that come through the coordinated access system. I know it says entry, but I think the Baltimore City's coordinated access system will be prioritized for those units. And that's a really key point in ensuring the units go to the folks that most need them. Next slide. Just quickly, I just want to make sure, I know there's plenty of folks on the call that are familiar with permanent supportive housing, but for those that might be new to it, it's deeply affordable housing. And what that means is that people are paying no more than 30% of their income on their housing costs, including if they pay, if they have zero income, they would pay zero dollars. So it's very deeply, deeply affordable to people at the lowest incomes. And that affordability and access to housing is then combined with tenant-centered services that really provide individualized assistance to help people access and maintain their housing and then thrive in community. So we can just go to the next slide. I'm, we, there, folks, when the draft plan is posted, and then we're going to share it with everyone, there is a lot of data and data analysis and charts. And for this public hearing, I'm just giving you the big highlights, but please really encourage you guys to take a look at the plan and really dive into more numbers and data and charts that we have available. We looked across a bunch of different sources. We go ahead to the next slide, including the point-in-time count, the housing inventory count, which are required by HUD every year. We looked at homeless management information system data, HMIS data, which is, which is captured and managed by MOHS. We looked at census data, housing availability data, there's a resource called the CHAS, Comprehensive Housing Affordability Strategy Database that we accessed. And then we got local data too from organizations, like the Housing Authority of Baltimore contributed data to help us understand the need, and so did House of Ruth around the domestic violence data. So there's a lot of different sources, and I promise you, the next few slides are not going to, not going to demonstrate how much data analysis that was done, but please, again, go, go check that plan out. So high level of our gaps analysis and really the needs that we identified. There's a, there's significant racial disparities in populations experiencing homelessness. The largest segment of the qualified population that's experiencing homelessness are single adult-only households. Cost burden and affordability are a significant challenge across income bands, but very acutely at incomes where people are, with people with incomes and households with incomes with less than 30% of the area median income. So for that, in Baltimore, that's $34,850. That's what we're talking about. So people, households that make less than $34,000 have the most severe and acute affordability challenges. All of the qualifying populations are in need. We understand that across the country, there is an affordable housing crisis. But we are identifying that the most acute need in terms of housing and services needs are for people experiencing long-term homelessness and chronic homelessness. So those individuals that have disabling conditions and also have experienced homelessness for a lengthy time or a cycle of it where they're cycling through institutions and homelessness. Next slide. So summarizing the gaps that we see, again, that there's a huge need for more affordable housing, affordable to all income levels, but very acutely at that 30% AMI and below. And you really need, in order to serve folks that are at zero, 15% is the highest usually common in the homelessness system, but even 30% when we think about more of the at-risk population. In order to serve those individuals, we need rental subsidies. So that's a gap, right, that we need rental subsidies to make housing deeply affordable. So, and helping to align those subsidies with the housing for qualifying populations. There's a demonstrated need for supportive housing, permanent sort of housing units specifically, those folks with those disabling conditions experiencing long-term homelessness. And, you know, the Strategic Investment Plan, which was published in March 2022, also identified gaps more through a community process, community engagement process. And we were happy to see, or sobered to see, or affirmed to see that a lot of the gaps identified in the Strategic Investment Plan really bore out with the data analysis that we conducted as well. So, of course, the people that we've, that were engaged in the process are reflecting what we're seeing, or the data's reflecting what people are experiencing on the ground, and I think that's very important. So when we think of at-risk of homelessness, and I'd say that other populations experiencing housing instability, significant challenges, significantly, there is not an adequate supply of affordable housing to meet those folks at those incomes, at those income levels. That is true. People fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, a need for them as well. We do want to note, though, that the rates of intimate partner violence and the experience of violence among all of the qualifying populations before is there. There's, there's high rates of that experience within the population, whether you're, you're experiencing homelessness because you're directly fleeing or that you've been homeless for a long time or you're experiencing it for the first time. There's very high rates of violence among, and experiences of violence among the qualifying population, which helps us understand that we need to adopt trauma-informed approaches and be cognizant of that, that issue when we're designing program and housing and services interventions generally. But again, the highest need, the highest need that we've identified are people experiencing homelessness, and they have the most acute and significant housing and services needs. Next slide. So we did a community, there's a big, huge community consultation process. HUD requires us jurisdictions to engage with these specific groups. The Continuum of Care, homeless service providers, domestic service provider, violent service providers, veteran groups, housing authorities, public agencies that address the needs of the qualifying populations. We're talking about behavioral health system Baltimore, law enforcement, other agencies that might serve the population. And then public or private organizations that are trying to address the fair housing and civil rights needs, and particularly in needs of people with disabilities. So those are named in the HUD regulations as required groups to consult with in the process of developing the Home ARP plan. Next slide. This has been a very, a long and process. There's been a significant consultation process with the community that's not just focused on Home ARP, but includes Home ARP and puts Home ARP in the context of all the resources that are available and that could be used to support reducing homelessness and housing instability. The, all of those different interviews and listening sessions and surveys and engagement led to the publication of, published of the Strategic Investment Plan in March 2022. I hope everyone will check it out. There is a link that we could, that will be provided in the draft plan. And I'm sure someone maybe could put the link in the chat too for folks joining virtually. And that implementation has been underway since March 2022. Next slide. So summary of the feedback through that process. This is really high level. There's much more detail within the draft allocation plan and I would say within the Strategic Investment Plan documents as well. Access to affordable units, a big primary challenge. The need to scale up housing and service interventions and make sure they're aligned with best practices, so they're most effective. Diversion and prevention, making sure we're helping people stay in their housing before they experience homelessness or return to housing as quickly as possible. And then really a whole body around how we transform our sheltering work. And this was really in the context of COVID-19 as well, and the use of non-congregate shelters too. And really concerted effort, people were very concerned in the process that, that folks that were in non-congregate shelters, that they don't return back to homelessness and that we can rehouse them. Next slide. Ideas generated to meet the needs through the community process kind of fell into three different topic areas. Just noting that really high, that first priority across all the topics was improving the supply and access to housing that people can afford to exit homelessness. And I think, you know, Alice mentioned this early, we know that the solution to homelessness is housing. So it's not a surprise that the community voiced that that was the greatest need. Next slide. We can keep going. Yeah. And so in the context, right, this process, all of these needs were identified, all of these ideas were generated. The city and Mayor's Office on Homeless Services and partnership with DHCD and others in the community were able to secure funding through other ARPA resources and additional resources to address a number of these in priority investment areas. So, and that included, you know, so you'll see on that slide, there's resources for those prevention and shelter needs that were identified and hotel acquisition for shelter. But what also was secured was $17.1 million for a housing accelerator fund. And that would support pipeline development. And the idea here is really that it's used to complement Home ARP funds for the same purpose. And we can optimize both services, both sources to really support and provide projects, what they need to be high-quality, permanent supportive housing projects and really kind of seed a pipeline of those projects in the city of Baltimore. Next slide. This is a chart that HUD requires in their plan, but just want to make sure that everyone has those numbers. So the allocation was 15.4 million. 14.3 would go to the development of affordable rental housing in the form of capital subsidies for projects. And then the city would use 7% for administration and planning. And that's, that's really important. We want to make sure that resources are aligned and coordinated and that projects are monitored and that we're really making sure that projects just, aren't just funded, but they're high-quality and that developers and owners and their service provider partners are getting what they need to make sure their projects come to fruition. Alice mentioned home and Home ARP. It's like the same thing, but not the same thing. And the big, big difference is that eligibility for Home ARP-funded projects and units is based on those, whether the tenant, the potential tenant fits in one of those qualifying populations. It's not based on that tenant's income. And that's, that's a big shift. That'll be a big shift for developers. And, and because that is important, because, and we know that most of the qualifying populations are experiencing or have very low or little income, rental assistance is really necessary to make sure that those folks are, are being served and have access to the units. And I think we're just really grateful for the Housing Authority of Baltimore City to be part of this coordinated effort and exploring options to, to address that need for projects and make sure those units are accessible. People might be, people might be sad to hear, though, however, that there are some similarities with home and so HUD site and neighborhood standards will still apply. And all the, this is a federal source, so this federal cross-cutting requirement still applies to, including Davis Bacon and others, that I know sometimes developers find barriers, that there, they can be barriers. So, so we showed this slide before. What is permanent supportive housing? Again, deeply affordable housing with a wraparound services. Just going to provide a little more detail about what we're talking about and what the city's planning on investing in, the type of model. Next slide. The way I like to think about who permanent supportive housing is for, it's proven effective for a variety of different populations with housing and services needs. But the way I like to think of it is, in a simple way, is it's really for people who, without that stability of housing, they can't access and make effective use of services and support in community. And then without services and support, they're also, they can't access the housing that they need. So it's really, it's about housing and services coming together to support an individual. And it's for people that, that have those high needs and access issues and have support needs. Why it's, it's effective, there's extensive evidence base that shows that supportive housing is effective at ending chronic homelessness and ending that cycle of homelessness that people experience of incarceration, homelessness and, and medical issues and health issues and those impacts. We know that it works. There's a, we have a link, we have a whole literature review on our website. If you want to dive into that, that shows, that provides all the different studies that show the results of supportive housing across these key outcomes. We know. that provides all the different studies that show the results of supportive housing across these key outcomes. We know that it primarily keeps people housed. It helps people rebuild their social and community connections, right, and reform partnerships with family and community. They improve tenants improve their physical and mental health. Often they increase their income and employment, we know that. So we know that permanent supportive housing on an individual level can really help people thrive. And on a community level, I think we all would understand that taking care of our most vulnerable and marginalized folks helps us all, right, helps our improve our community, generally speaking. And community health on a whole. Want to talk about how in order to get those great outcomes that we know that permanent supportive housing can get, it's really important to align with the best practices and the standards that we have that we know produce the best outcomes. You know, often the often a developer may see, don't may not see their role in supportive housing very clearly and and think of it as a services strategy. But I just want to reiterate, especially with this kind of investment the city is making to develop new supportive housing, that it's really important that all organizations know their role, the developer, the property management company, the service provider, all understand that they are part of making supportive housing effective. And they are implementing their planning from their concept and project concept to their operations and ongoing really integrating what we know works. That's tenant-driven planning and operations. We're involving, we're asking people what they want and what they need and how they need their services. We're incorporating and aligning with housing first and harm reduction. Those are evidence-based practices that are proven to be effective to meet these needs of the population we're talking about. I mentioned that homelessness in itself is very traumatic, and then we also have more traumatic experiences and high rates of different kinds of trauma within population experiencing homelessness. So it's really important that we're designing and thinking about our project in a in our operations in a trauma-informed way. A lot of folks that are served through supportive housing have often been shut out of access to housing, and that's why they're being experiencing homelessness. So it's really important that our projects are are screening people in and thinking about the criteria that they're using and thinking about rental history and other invictions and and those things that often screen folks out of housing. And then really, really important and especially important for this funding and how Baltimore will be using this resource is the coordination between property management and services and really with under the guise of shared goals, but knowing each other's roles. All geared to helping tenants stay housed, right, so especially partnering around eviction prevention and other coordination, really looking how they can communicate together to support tenants and and support the health of the building and the community overall as well. Next slide. Okay, so we're gonna, I think, in just a couple minutes, I think we're doing pretty good on time. That's good. I talk fast and I am sorry for that, but again, that draft plan is will be available soon and really encourage you to dive into it. It should be posted on the 27th, this Monday, coming Monday. Also think we'll be sharing it with anyone who registered for this, so you'll get an email when the link to the plan where it is on the DHCD website. We're asking folks to submit comments through this online public forum that'll be on DHCD's website. And that'll that public comment period will be open for 30 days. So it'll begin on the February 27th and stay open till Tuesday, March 28th. And then we will incorporate, summarize, respond to all of that feedback, incorporate that into the plan and get it submitted, or DHCD will do the job of getting it submitted to HUD by the March 31st deadline. And you could see it's a it's a little tight, but but achievable, right? And then HUD has 45 days to review and approve the plan or review and reject the plan, frankly. And then after that, we can consider it approved and we can be working to get this money on the street to to help get units online for supportive housing. And and the website will have more information too. Okay, well, so I think we're ready for our question and comment period. We'll have 30 minutes. There were a lot of folks registered, so we wanted to be cognizant of that and make sure that, you know, that we could get as many questions and comments as possible. Not sure that might be not be as relevant, but if you could just make your comments and questions as brief as possible, so we can get to as many as possible. And then think about considering think about considering submitting public comments like formally through the comment feature as well, because we want to, you know, really hear your voice in it and make sure we get your comments, right? So I think, how are you doing this? We're doing kind of back and forth from virtual to in person. What do you think?
There's not that many folks in person, so I think we'd like to try to let folks in person go first and then turn it over to our virtual attendees as well for comment. We are going to try to limit comments per participant to one minute just to try to be cognizant of everyone's time. And you know, the individuals in person who want to make comments, I'd like to turn it over to you. And then if individuals are interested in commenting and are virtual, if you want to go ahead and use the, if you see at the bottom of your screen, there's a reaction button. You can use that to raise your hand and we will call on you. So with that.
And comments in the chat.
And yes, in comments, questions and comments can also be submitted in the chat. We can respond to those in the chat. You know, we do encourage again to be cognizant of everyone's time to try to, you know, somebody's already kind of raised your point and just put it in the chat. That will become part of the allocation plan, part of the
Hello, everyone. I came here to basically, you know, I I changed what I was going to really talk about. I wanted to kind of like be very critical towards HUD and and my thought process in this process changed. My name's Anthony Williams. I'm the vice chair of the C O C, but I want to talk about what housing has done for me. I got housed in 2015. I was homeless, living in a abandoned property downtown Baltimore. I experienced homelessness often with all my life. In 2016, I ended up joining the continuum of care because of, because I heard about the continuum of care in Baltimore and the conditions in the shelter was very horrendous, very bad, and I experienced that. During that experience, again, I was able to get housing. I was able to get two months rental support for permanent supportive housing. I've been in my apartment now eight years. I got approved for social security. I have, I have my name on a lease. I just bought a brand new vehicle that I was able to get because of my social security and some of the back money. Again, I wanted to be very critical towards HUD, but I've been working in this process with the continuum of care for eight years as well. I worked on a strategic investment plan with consultants from HUD. And, you know, and I've been at this juncture from the beginning of looking at, you know, hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars over the eight years coming to Baltimore, ranking and scoring projects, working with many with many members that are here on this, this webinar and at this hearing. I want to say what housing did for me because I think it's crucial that units are developed for individuals to be housed. Some people will be housed and overdose and die. I've seen that in my own development. I've seen people. When I moved into my unit, I decided to stop everything. I stopped smoking, I stopped drinking, I stopped doing cocaine, I stopped doing crack. And I, I wanted to move in because I wanted things different. I wanted my life to be different. And that was my choice. And I had to address my mental health issues. I was able to do that being housed. And now because of the person I am today, again, I'm gonna say this again, I don't like talking about titles. But now I'm the vice chair of the Continuum of Care of Baltimore City. But I'm also in a lot of other committees and and organizations working to secure housing for people like myself that have experienced homelessness often on. And it's very important, I'm not going to be critical like I wanted to. It was told a long time ago, we could take their money, but we should be also critical of HUD. We can take their money, but we should be critical of some of the programs and the things that they are developing, and I'll leave you all with that. But this is what housing has done for me, and it has done so much for my life. And, you know, I feel like a full person. I feel like a full human being. I'm responsible. Okay, I show up for meetings. And we lead each other. We lead other homeless people into this work with lived experience. I'm giving you my lived experience, and we must, we must create those units of housing so that people like myself can become like myself, become strong and become the full human being that they want to be. I felt like an animal. I ate out trash cans. I mean, I mean, I did some horrible things. But my wife is now, I'm a full human being. I feel proud and feel great of the things that I have accomplished in my life, and I want everybody to have that opportunity. Thank you for letting me share that.
Very generous comment. Thank you for sharing your experience. Is there anybody else in person who'd like to comment? Is there anybody else in person who'd like to comment?
You have a lot of questions in the chat.
No, okay. We can certainly start moving to some of the questions in the chat. Kim, Kim King, would you like to to speak as you have a question to chat about the the gap analysis? And urban farmers?
You need to unmute all? I don't know if that's what I want you to do with that.
In the other one? Sure.
Are we going now or?
Yeah, okay.
Yes, yes, we're here.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Here innovations for urban farming. And last year this king so
Ms. King. I'm sorry, you're fading in and out. We have a little bit of a poor connection. And we maybe try to come back to you when you get a better.
I mean, I could also, her comment is pretty detailed, so I could just respond that, you know, to the, it did not factor.
Real quick, but I'm I'm going to read the comment so that everybody can hear it in case they have a hard time commenting and then so Ms. King, I'm going to read what you wrote in the chat on your behalf. The connection was breaking up, so we were only getting like every fifth word that you were saying, if that. So the question was, did your analysis include urban farmers who historically housing challenged and housing insecure, especially since our department, D H D, supports urban farming? Did ADUs accessory dwelling units or rent-to-own tiny dwelling on wheels get consideration where urban farmers can reside in these structures? A prudent and pragmatic logistical scenario for urban farmers and need to reside close or adjacent to the vacant lots they will farm, which is practical, pragmatic, efficient as a best practice. However, zoning and policy needs to be updated to support this innovative offering that can also improve fresh food security and access to the community by farming vacant lots under your adopt-a-lot program. I brought the following to the attention of Mr. Tutman back in 2017 and late this past year. Thank you for your consideration and understanding the bigger picture need, and she also provided a link to some additional information.
And I can just respond in terms of the gaps analysis or in the needs assessment. We did not look at urban farmers as a specific subpopulation. We focused on the qualifying populations to the that really is about like housing status. And so so to the extent that urban farmers fit into one of those qualifying populations, they could, you know, certainly be served potentially through projects that are funded. Just to note, you know, I think there are a lot of subpopulations that we talk about that experience those four different statuses, so youth, right, young adults, veterans, households with children, adults with children, and all kinds of people with behavioral health conditions. There's a lot of different characteristics of people that also fit within those qualifying populations as well. I think the other question is about the type of units funded, and I would defer to DHCD, but that really hasn't been and I'm not, I don't think I'm familiar with local housing and development strategies to understand that environment for that, but no specific types of units or rental housing units have been identified and structures at that point, at this point.
Yeah, I mean, the comment raises some broader zoning issues that are frankly issues irrespective of the funding source. I did want to note that, you know, there was discussion of kind of potentially mobile units and rent to own. Some of those things are unfortunately not permitted to be funded under the home art plan or really the home program either. Although they are certainly very compelling concepts and things that there could potentially be funding opportunities for under other DHCD programs or community catalyst grant. Or the community land trust component of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We do have another comment for an in-person participant, if we could go to that.
Yes. Hello, good evening. My name is Miss Wanda Gary. I'm a member of the C O C, have been for several years now. I'm also currently homeless, living in one of the hotels here in the city. Did it just cut off? Okay, and I'm listening to what you all say in reference to and and all this time in between. Okay, we need houses now, we need places to stay now. And if HUD, where they shouldn't take a month and a half just to review some paperwork, I'm sure there other people that can assist with that, but they need to do it as quick as possible. It's not a good feeling being in a in a position such as standing on home shelter, especially when your vision impaired, such as I am. It's just a whole lot behind that. I don't want to get into all of that, how things get to that point and where I am now, but I don't smoke, I don't do drugs, and I don't drink. And I'm saying that for a reason, so that people can understand a lot of times it's not something you did to that you're in the situation that you're in. Nevertheless, I'd like to know more about the city with those dollar homes that they were talking about, you know, I mean, with all the thousands of houses they have in the city, just sitting around. You know, I mean, with all the thousands of houses they have in the city, just sitting around, just falling apart. You know, what's going on with that? They, you know, when I called about that years ago. And I was told, oh, we're not the first of the year, you call the first of the year, oh, we're not a few months, it's just a runaround. So be straightforward with people, you know, there are a lot of people that are in these shelters, they don't want to be there. They're doing everything they can to get out of them. But you need help, a lot of them are not getting the assistance they need for their credit scores and, and different things that can hold them back from going out to even get a, get a place. So we need to some, to expedite a lot of these things that y'all are trying to do, HUD, whatever, the city. We need you to step up to the plate and get the proper people in those positions. And just put yourself in their position for, you know, just a minute or two. And I'm sure a lot of things will be done. So hopefully HUD will examine all of this and, and just simple type of things and get it done quickly. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. I think at this time, we're going to go back to working through comments in the chat. I see Tanya Baker has a question about the program. Whether or not it's only tailored to transitional housing for homeless. Julian, I don't know if you want to speak to kind of the differentiation of permanent supportive housing and transitional housing?
Sure, so the city is planning to allocate this towards rental housing, affordable, deeply affordable, permanent supportive housing. That means there's no time limits. A lot of times we distinguish transitional versus permanent in terms of transitional being time limited. Usually up to two years, someone can stay in a transitional housing option. So this is really permanent housing with no time limits. A person can stay as long as they'd like, as long as they abide by a regular lease that you and I abide by.
Yeah, so, thank you. The second part of Tanya's question is regarding how HUD will establish the category or allocation to various programs and the timeline to approve the suggested programs. I think Julian spoke to the timeline that HUD has to review and, you know, approve or submit back for comment, the allocation plan, that's the subject of the meeting tonight. And in terms of establishing the categories for the allocation of the funds. It's really the subject matter of the allocation plan itself to, for the participating jurisdiction. Baltimore City to identify how we plan to use our home, our award. In this case, we are proposing to use it for the capital investment for the development of new permanent supportive housing. I do see one, an additional follow-up from the same participant, Tanya Baker. If there's criteria for partnership, for the partnership program according to HUD. Julian, I don't know if you want to speak to the criteria or kind of the qualifications that. Qualifications isn't quite the right term for the development of permanent supportive housing. And kind of get some of the attributes again.
Sure, so some key aspects of what permanent supportive housing is. So it's deeply affordable, it's available to people that are, have zero income sometimes to 15% of the area median income to 30%. It has voluntary services, so participation in services is not a required, a requirement of staying in your housing. And then their services and supports are really provided to you by, and they're tenant driven and individualized assistance that helps you thrive in community. That helped, and I'll put our, the link to standards in for more information on that.
Thank you. Then next comment from Joyce Lambert. As if the program is for Baltimore City residents living in deplorable conditions. And there is a follow-up question, do seniors qualify for this program? So, you know, certainly seniors can qualify for housing created under the Home Art Program. And Julian, do you want to go back over again, the, the kind of, the housing? The kind of criteria for residents that would be matched with housing through the coordinated access system?
Yeah, so Home Art projects would be, would not exclude any of the qualifying populations. So, and when we're talking about qualifying populations, we're really talking about a housing status. Right, like where, where someone is living currently that makes them eligible for this housing. So while projects wouldn't exclude anyone from those four populations. These projects will prioritize people that are coming through coordinated entry and are currently experiencing homelessness. So they are living in shelters, they're living in streets, on the streets or other places that are not meant for human habitation. And often have disabling condition. So I understand the coordinated access system really prioritizes people experiencing chronic homelessness is what we call it. But that, what that means is they're currently homeless and they've experienced lengthy times of homelessness over a year or a year within the last three years and have, also have a disabling condition.
Yeah, so I think just to be backing on that, again, the Home Art Program is very tailored towards serving the needs of individuals who are experiencing homelessness. It is not at all to the importance of improving living conditions for residents outside of that population. Our intent with the allocation plan is really to focus on that area of highest need. We have, you know, other programs that we can certainly discuss that generally focus on housing quality outside of the, you know, kind of qualified populations that we're discussing here tonight. Certainly the Affordable Housing Trust Fund currently has, but there's some funding availability open. And I encourage folks to check out that serves a broader demographic, up to 50% of the area median income. And, you know, other programs available for low income and senior homeowners. So there's a lot of great resources on our website, I encourage folks to check those out that hopefully do address that broader need that's being addressed by Joyce. So with that, I think we have gotten through the questions that are in the chat. I'd like to open it up and folks again, at the bottom of your screen, there's a reaction button. Click that, you can raise your hand to ask any questions. We can call on folks to ask, answer any additional questions that folks may have. One, one more minute going, one.
I was going to say, if anybody else has any other comments, so. Alex, do you want to give information real quick? I know we put it in the chat, just on where people will be able to get this information on Monday?
Exactly, yes, so on Monday, we will be posting the full draft allocation plan for review and comment. It is, as Julian, you know, referenced, includes a lot of details that we didn't have the time to go into tonight. A lot of great data that I think folks, you know, who, you know, spend a lot of time thinking about these issues is, are going to find really interesting. And a lot of more detail in terms of, you know, kind of the process we took to get to the conclusion and the next steps from here on out. So I encourage folks to go to the website on Monday and download that plan, read it. And there will also be a link on the website to provide written comment. Comments that we received today will also become part of the allocation plan, as will any written comments we receive. We will be providing a written response to each of those comments as well. And they will all be memorialized as part of the final allocation plan. There's a 30 day public comment period. And then, once we have all those comments and we will be finalizing the plan, it's knitting with hopefully at least 24 hours to spare before that March 31st deadline. You know, as Julian mentioned, it's been a mad dash to get to this point, but it's great that we had so much great planning to build off of from the strategic investment plan. That this really is just adding to, as opposed to meeting and starting conversation from scratch. So, you know, those resources also will be emailed out to our participants from, than our registrants from this evening. So, you know, there'll be multiple ways to access the draft plan and the comment link. And we certainly look forward to hearing from you with additional questions and comments that you may think of after this evening. We'll also continue to be in touch as we move to the next steps. The allocation plan is really just one part of the process, but really from here. You know, we continue through the notice of funding availability to get the funding out on the street. And to see the great ideas and projects that you guys have in mind for this exciting one-time award of funds to serve this area of the population. So with that, Alice, Julian, I don't know if you have anything else you'd like to add?
I would just say that the website is dhcd.baltimorecity.gov, right? And.
I can drop that into the chat.
Are we going to be putting it then in the plans and reports section? That where it's going to go, just because it's a big website. People always say they can't find stuff.
Yeah, well, we'll have it posted on the, on the landing page, of course, and probably.
Okay.
Probably a section under, for the home program now.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
Excellent. Well, I just want to take time this evening, thank you all, for everyone that joined. I know that we're down to about 30 participants right now, but I think we were upwards of 50 throughout the course of the last hour. So thank you for taking the time to join us, thank you for your interest and dedication to the intersection of housing and homelessness and health in our city. And we will continue to engage with the community throughout the rest of this process and look forward to working together to address creating units as we move forward. Oh, I see one last handed a hand, just go up by Michael Pettit. Petit Pettit.
It does look like he has his hand up, yes, yes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
You can, go ahead.
Yeah, I posted this to the chat, but it somehow it didn't come across. How can I, as a landlord, keep a single parent in their home who's not on subsidy? But is behind on rent? And I'm going to file for, you know, start the filing process to evict on Monday. What can you do to help? And as a follow-up, if you can get them on board on a subsidy between, before I evict them, how soon can I get paid? Thank you.
That's a good question. Ms. Pettit, do we have your contact information from registration? Tammy, would we have email address?
Yes.
Okay, also, if. You can also email alice.kennedy@baltimorecity.gov with any detailed information. We would also need contact information for the tenant. With name, address, phone number or, and or email address, if you can provide that. And I will also try to get staff to get your information from the registration this evening to make contact on that.
Thanks, look forward to hearing from you.
Great, I did drop in the chat a link to just, if folks are generally interested. Program that's offered through the mayor's office and children and family success for rental assistance. But, Mr. Pettit, if you can follow up with your specific information in addition, more detailed information, we can help connect with us.
Great. All right, well, with that, thanks again, everyone, for your commitment to this work. Have a wonderful rest of your evening and enjoy your Friday and into the weekend. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming out tonight.
Good night.
Is that recording of the meeting available? Yep, so how, this.